13th, 2023, meeting of the Lower Marion Board of Commissioners. A fact that is not lost on anyone who's sitting up here. This is our last meeting of the year of 2023. Our next meeting is going to be in 2024. So before we start, please silence your cellphones. There's amplifying equipment available for those who are having difficulty hearing during the meeting, including the audio system in this room being equipped with a telecoil, which can connect directly to hearing aids that are equipped with that if you have them. When the floor is open for public comment later this evening, comment will first be taken from those who are present in the room and then from those who are attending virtually. If you're here in the room and you wish to make public comment, we ask that you use this podium to my right, to your left. And those who are attending virtually, if you wish to make comment, please raise your virtual hand and the Township's Secretary will promote you to where we can see you and hear you in the meeting. And for anyone who addresses the board, we ask at the beginning that you introduce yourself, say your name and where broadly in the township you live. And in general, it is a policy of this board that we listen to all comments and questions first and at the very end, we respond to them. So with that, will the December 13th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Lower Marion, please come to order and all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the floor?
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. S. Kramer has asked to be excused. Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Here.
Mr. Gavin.
Present.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. McComb.
Here.
Mr. McKeon.
Here.
Ms. O'Neal.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Zelloff.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. So the first item on our agenda this evening is that because this is the last meeting of the year, in the second of two years, we actually have some Commissioners who will be leaving the board, and we'd like to recognize them. So I'm going to ask that Commissioners O'Neal, McKeon, McComb, Zelloff, Gavin, and Bernheim join me in the Oval up here. Yeah. We're not all used to being in the Oval with no one but us. That is, so this is the last board meeting for three Commissioners: Commissioner O'Neal, Commissioner McComb, and Commissioner McKeon. And we have three Commissioners who are going to be saying a few words about them, each of them. And before I get to that, I just wanted to say a few words myself. And that is what we have here are three amazing public servants who are thoughtful, insightful, who have been tremendous ambassadors for their constituents, and who have brought a lot of amazing ideas and energy to this board. You know, personally, I am very sad that this is their last night as Commissioner. You know, when I first came on this board, I had this idea that, you know, somewhat nobly that I would be on this board, it was my contribution to public service. And what I discovered is that actually the nice thing about being on the board, the terrific thing about being on this board, is the 13 other people who are up here that I get to be up here with. They're amazing people. They have tremendous mutual respect and admiration on this board. We are, I say, we are fortunate to be on this board at this time. And I think we genuinely enjoy each other. So I recognize on January 2nd, we're going to get three new terrific members of the board, three new Commissioners, who will each bring their own talents and contributions. But Tiffany, Dave, Mike, your contributions have been significant, and this board is going to feel your absence. And personally, I will miss you on this board. You know, I'll miss seeing you here on this side of the dais, at least on Wednesday evenings. Okay, so that's for me. I am going to turn this over to, I guess, Commissioner Tiffany has been on the board the longest, so we are going to start with Commissioners off.
Thank you, President Sinai, and to follow up on your remarks. It is hard to believe that this is the last meeting for Commissioner Tiffany O'Neal. She has been dedicated and devoted to the residents of her ward, a ward that's Bryn Mar and Rosemont and parts of Villanova and Gladwin. She responds quickly to residents and their concerns. She's worked hard to help solve their problems, is always looking out for their interests. She comes up with creative solutions. She thinks outside the box. She refers to her constituent work as casework. Casework and public service is Tiffany O'Neal's passion, so much so that she spends her day job, the paying job, working for a state rep in helping with casework, leading that office in Bucks County. So it was eight years ago Tiffany started her first term, and there was an enormous backlog of casework that was left behind for her. She worked those cases, and everyone discovered that with her help, problems could be fixed. Her accomplishments include improvements to the busy intersection at Spring Mill and Concha Hocken State, the Cali Bridge on Morris Avenue at Old Gulf. Tiffany oversaw that and sort of monitored it. Let's just say she figured out how to get a Cali Bridge completed quickly, something that we're struggling with nearby in the township. Tiffany added stop signs, one at Morris and Williamson. She improved the intersection of Morris and New Gulf, where there's now a landing pad for pedestrians. Tiffany's passions include parks and open space. She was Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee. She consistently advocated for our tree canopy, planting new trees, working with the Shade Tree Commission, and she became tangled up in bamboo. She co-founded the Preserve at Harerton, and that's a community group whose mission is to improve the wooded area in front of Harerton House. And she started the Martin Luther King Day of Service at the Preserve. So every year now, that morning, there's a large group of volunteers who clear vines and clean up the park that is now well-used by families and walkers. And she even persuaded this body to allocate funds to the Preserve at Harerton as well as Harerton House. And there was a master plan for the Preserve at Harerton that Tiffany led the way on that. She was Chair of the Ad-Hoc Stormwater Committee. She was champion of smartly funding big stormwater projects with ARP funds. She became, bear with me for a second, she became knowledgeable, so knowledgeable on stormwater issues that Tiffany voluntarily went to other civic association meetings to explain the stormwater initiative. She was on the Ad-Hoc ARP Engagement Committee. She's Chair of Grants and Community Development. She speaks passionately about including nonprofits in our CDBG funding. The Vitality Grant Program, which is on our agenda for this evening, well, the name is Tiffany's name. She came up with that. She prioritized crime prevention and catching burglars. We caught one, the police caught one, in her ward on Saturday night. Were you there? And, but she hosted a town hall with LMPD on Zoom, and 100 people in her ward were on it because the burglaries are a big issue. Tiffany cares, and all this shows how much she cares. She made Ward 11 a lot better than when she started eight years ago. So Tiffany lived in Wynwood, and then in Marion, and then moved to Bryn Mar. So she knows not only her ward, but she knows the whole township, and I think that's reflected in how she conducted herself on this board. So I asked Tiffany this week about her board service and what she was most proud of, and she may not say, but she's most proud of her, the parks improvements and the tree canopy improvements, and her faithful communications to Ward 11 residents, which were regular, and I got copies of them, and I thought, boy, I better get moving on my emails. She's proud of her career in public service and working with all of us and doing so in an open and transparent way. Tiffany favors effective but limited local government, and her, I think that guided her thinking as a Commissioner, and how much we spend really matters to her. I think it's fair to say her thinking and my thinking were aligned on that issue. And I'll miss Tiffany, but I think we will all miss Tiffany. She's pleasant, caring, dedicated, and she has a heart of gold. She's a politician who isn't political. She wants simply to make life better for the people in her ward and the people in Lower Marion Township. I don't think she's going to stop serving this community, even as a former Commissioner. Tiffany, we're going to miss you. Thank you for your service.
Yes, so much.
And we have a gift?
Thanks.
Wow. Okay. The original plan was for me to read my speech and hold this. That was a bad plan.
Oh, my gosh, that's beautiful. Thank you so much.
Yes. So would you like Tiffany to speak, or we're going to go down?
I think Tiffany can go.
Okay.
Thank you. So I heard some amazing words coming out of Commissioner Zelloff's mouth. I think they were about me, but I'm looking around. Thank you very much for those kind words. So I'm going to miss working with all of you so much, and Scott, certainly our caucus meetings are going to get a little smaller, but you'll have to work really hard to get all of our ad hoc members aboard, and that'll make your meetings more interesting. But I also just wanted to sort of echo what you have said earlier, President Sinai, and that is to thank and to really acknowledge all the members of this board. What an exceptional group of men and women that I have thoroughly enjoyed. And Commissioner Bernheim, thank you, President Sinai, Ernie Staff, Panoni, Gilhei with Hi Schwartz, the list goes on and on. The public know that your interests and the way that you all conduct the public's business with such compassion and real, so dignified that we, I have really come to appreciate that so much. And also, just kind of working through the police department and the, you know, the firemen and women who serve our community are amazing, and the fact that they dedicate their lives to us, to us, to keep us safe is really remarkable. You know, it's tough and dangerous work, and I will never, ever forget that work. Commissioner Zelloff alluded to this a bit. My whole career has been public service. I've served two U.S. ambassadors, a governor, a whole slew of state reps, which are amazing. But all of these men that I served all really ate, breathed, loved, lived public service. And the one thing I have strived to do is really take all of those lessons learned between hard work, dedication, leading with integrity, and I really hope I did that for this township. And I hope I didn't let you down. So, thank you. I also just want to congratulate Maggie Harper Epstein. I don't think she's here tonight, but certainly looking forward to helping her in a, to ensure a smooth transition, and I'm always here for any questions she has on issues. So I'm not going anywhere, so that's good. And the only last thing I will say, because I could go on and on, and I won't, is to really just convey thank you for this gift of service. I'm truly grateful. Thank you.
So I get the honor of talking about Commissioner McKeon. Well, you know, one of the great things about having 14 Commissioners on this board is this diversity of experience and expertise and opinions. We all bring something different to this board. Another great thing about having 14 Commissioners is we can hide a weak link. Mike, you've served, you've served for six great years, and one of, one of my first actions when on this board was filling a role that was left vacant when Paul McElhaney stepped down to become the Director of Public Works. You came around introducing yourself to everybody, and you were incredibly well-prepared. You knew the township business. You seemingly know every single person in this township. I don't quite understand how, but you're like, oh, I knew that guy. I played football with him, and I played this, and we went to school together. You know every single person in this township, but you knew the issues inside and out. And I think a hallmark of your time on this board has been how well-prepared you are. And I think, you know, what everyone sees is our meetings on Wednesday nights, they see the constituent services. What they don't see is the work you do behind the scenes. So you chaired the Ad-Hoc Nominations Committee, have gotten so many people from this township involved in different ways on various committees, and have brought wonderful people to bring service to the board. Your job, you know, your job doing that has been exemplary. You chaired our Ad-Hoc Pool Fees Committee and saved us the, the hours and hours every year of rehashing the same exact issues to come up with the same exact answer by, by doing that work ahead of time and behind the scenes for us. And really, on a, on a weekly basis, you come so well-prepared. I don't think I've ever seen anyone more prepared for meetings. You, you're in our, our pre-board, in our executive session, scribbling in that weird way with your, I don't know how you hold a pencil, but you do it in a very weird way. But you're always taking notes. You come with binders. You come with, you know, you, you are so well-prepared, and I think that's something that, that people don't see. How much work, you know, we don't just put in the three or four, 11 hours of a Wednesday night meeting. We put in hours and hours of time, and you have never shirked on that responsibility. But it's not just the time you put in to do it. You've also taken bold stands throughout, and you've never compromised yourself. The thing that always pops up in my head, and as you know, there was a, a development project in Ardmore for a historic property, I won't mention which one it was, where the developer wanted his way, and you, in no uncertain terms, despite being threatened with litigation, which actually occurred, and obviously we won the litigation, but in no uncertain terms, let them know that we are not compromising because of those threats. You have stood up against overdevelopment in this township. You have been an incredible advocate for your residents, whether it's the Balla Library, whether it's the Firehouse, whether it's the parks in, in your end of the township, your newsletter, you've communicated with people, you've gotten people involved who've never been involved, whether they're coming to meetings or talking to you, you know, one-on-one to, to share their opinions with you. You really always have gone to the mat for your residents. And the last thing I want to talk about is, clearly, I couldn't do this without talking about your sense of humor. For those of you who have not watched the Public Works Pipeline, which Mike was the star, I guess the star of, as his work as the Chair of the Public Works Committee, and judging from the ratings, that's almost everybody has not seen it. If you haven't seen it, I highly, highly, highly recommend watching the telethon that Mike did to help save the show, and also the last episode, his, the roast of Mike McKeon. Go onto LMTV. It's worth the 24 minutes of your time to watch it. But it's not only that. You know, you joined me with wearing Star Wars costumes on May the 4th. We had an incredible time hosting the Memorial Day Parade and kind of, even that, as we're making jokes, you were also so well-prepared. You had done so much homework figuring out who was involved from this township in, in various wars. You knew, you knew so much about the history of this township, and it's not only making light of it, but really, you didn't, you didn't do that. You made a really important ceremony, the Memorial Day Ceremony, but you made it fun and accessible for everybody with your humor. And, and really, on a nightly basis, and especially as we have these long meetings sometimes, you keep us loose, you keep us having fun. That, that part of this really, as President Sinai said early, earlier, can't be overstated. This is a, this is a job where we all put in a lot of time, and, and we do it for public service, but we also do it because of this group of Commissioners we have here, and you have made serving on this board so much better and so much more enjoyable for all of us, even when you're not really contributing anything. So, so Mike, my friend, you will be sorely missed on Wednesday nights. Jen, Ava, Alyssa, he's your problem now.
Well, you know, thank you very much, Andy, for those really nice words. I wanted to thank my family, they're sitting in the back like gangsters, for showing up tonight. So, it's my parents, Barry, Maria, my daughters, Ava and Alyssa, I'm sure can't wait to leave. Ava, it took a lot of guts to come out into the Township Building, given your outstanding warrant, but that was nice. My brother Kevin, who was born in Lower Marion, he's trying to fill me now, 43 years old, he lives in Lower Marion, and he had to ask me how to get to the Township Building, because he's never been there until tonight. I think that's awesome. Stay gold, pony boy. And my, my wife Jen, thank you so much for all the support over the years and, and coming out. And I also, you know, I want to thank, obviously, this is an amazing board. It's the best team I've ever been on. I've been on a lot of teams. It's, that's the way I view it. Township staff, they do all the work behind the scenes. I think a lot of it is really unappreciated, but they're working at least nine to five jobs or later, and I didn't get to understand that until I had been on the, the board for a while. Also, the crew at Lower Marion TV, I got to know them more as we did the Public Works Pipeline together. We left some great ideas on the floor, so I'm hoping someone else can pick that up, whether it's the Speed Humpty Dance or the Real Housewives of Belmont Hills. I know there's like a lot of great stuff out there that we just have to push the envelope a little harder to get there. And I wanted to also thank Jerome Woods or whatever, the new guy in Ward Three for coming, who's come to so many meetings. Thank you so much, because I think you're going to absolutely hit the ground running next year. I also wanted to dispel two rumors before I'm done. First, I have no intention of faking my own death again. It was a bad idea the first time, and there was too much collateral damage. So one, one and done on that one. And also, my life coach and my analyst have talked to me about not attending any more meetings of the township, and I have no plans at all to show up at any meetings and do anything, so you will, unlikely to see me at any meetings. But, no, it's just a fantastic experience, and I met a lot of great people through it, and that's really the best part about it for me, the people. So thank you to everybody. Thank you again, Andy, for the nice words, and it's been an honor and a privilege.
Talk about tough acts to follow, you know, two, two guys that actually have a sense of humor, you know, as opposed to someone like myself who pretends from time to time with a, with a one-liner. But I will say that first and foremost, I really need to take two seconds to echo what President Sinai stated, that, you know, we have three people who are leaving the board who are not just colleagues, but I consider friends. And at any time that I had the privilege of serving as President of the Board and people would pay a compliment, I said, it's the Warren Buffett Rule. Surround yourself with good people. And these are three of the superstars that were able, in my situation at least, I could say, made me look good and I would depend upon a lot. And we all here on the board and the township are going to miss your service. And there was an email I got from Ray Cosella, Mike, private joke. In any event, when President Sinai asked me to say something about Commissioner McComb, I was, uh-oh, this is a problem. In order to do this, you have to be very, very succinct and to the point, because the hallmark of Commissioner Dave McComb was being succinct and to the point. There was, if I can steal the line from Commissioner Zelloff, a one-term wonder. Commissioner McComb came to us from, you know, a particular ward. He would have interest about the constituents that, that elected him, but there was no doubt that he understood the concept. You're elected by a ward to serve the township as a whole. And on each and every issue, when he would speak, people would listen. And he established that within himself in such short, short time, which candidly came no surprise to me. I knew, knew of Dave and his reputation as a commercial litigator in the same arena in which I dabble from time to time when I'm not here, and he was so highly regarded that it was no surprise to me whatsoever to see how quickly he fit in, or not merely fit in, but rose to the top, that we would all depend upon listening to Dave and what he had to say about any particular issue. Dave served on several committees. He serves as, you know, co-chair in the Fire Committee, was value-added in that as we went through the development of a strategic plan, and where he had thoughts and concepts, he was very, very quick to come forward in order to assist us. Dave also served in the Library Committee, where he's been instrumental in helping that with our libraries, if they had moved forward in a time where some people are saying, why do you have libraries? Get everything online. It's important, and Dave would let us know of the importance and the number of people within our township that frequently go to the libraries and our need to support them in, in all that they, they do for us. Dave also is on the Finance Committee and grasped the finances of the township very, very quickly. When we first had the ARP funds awarded to us, Dave served on the Subcommittee to help try to figure out what's the best way that we can go ahead and utilize of the 25 million or so we got in the, in the first tranche, and in, along with, I believe it was, and Vice President Gavin and Commissioner Zelloff, to put something together that guided all of us as what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. And that was an element of Dave's knowledge and understanding that he was able to draw from his professional career and lend it blend over to us. Most recently, Dave served as Chair of our Police Committee, and this year, we've had some interesting police issues, and Dave has been able to marshal us through those as a board and be able to handle them with the idea that we're not looking just at those issues, we're looking long-term. What do we do with our, our police force? What do we do with issues that, you know, we here at the Township are presented, and those which are systemic around our, our entire country regarding police? And Dave has been a leader of that. So not having Dave, you know, in all of these arenas for us is going to be something that we're going to feel very, very quickly as he steps down, and I know, having spent some time with his successor, he recognizes that there's some big shoes that have to be before him and even behind him as we speak right now, of the ward in which Dave has, has represented. And let me just pick up on one other comment that Vice President Gavin made. The people who are here don't just work on Wednesday evenings. There had been a time, long, long ago, where people, where I would see them open up the packet that we get as they sat here, but that has not been anything of the configuration of this board for a period of time. And I know even on weekends, Dave is literally out there. I recall on a Saturday, driving back late when I was at my office, and I see who on Levering Mill Road, but Commissioner Dave McComb and former Commissioner George Manos walking around pointing to something for what was coming up for us that following week. And it was always evident to each of us that we were talking about Commissioner McKeon and his homework. It certainly was something that we knew that Commissioner McComb did. Everything was very, very thoughtful. And so even when we are having executive sessions, including this evening, and something came up, people waited to hear, what's Dave think on this? And Dave, what we think is, we're going to miss you on behalf of the entire township, if I can take that liberty. Thank you so very much. And on Wednesday evenings, you're not going to have a clue what to do. (Applause). What, where?
Right behind you.
Oh, here, no, okay. Look at this. Oh, my gosh, Dave, this is cool. This is really neat. Right, all right. It says, Dave McComb, so you will have time on your hands. Here.
Well, with, with that intro, I really do have to be brief, and I will. Before I say anything, I just want to recognize former Commissioner Manos and future Commissioner Lou Rossman. I remember that afternoon, we were on East Levering Mill and tried to figure out where the sidewalk would go, and we both almost got hit by a car, and then we realized it was Commissioner Bernheim![1748.12][1748.12](Laughter) And his, and his speeding BMW. But, but I just want to say how grateful I am for having had the opportunity to serve as a Commissioner. It's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you. You're a terrific group. I particularly want to thank board leadership, former leadership, Commissioner Bernheim, President Sinai, Vice President Gavin. Great job. It's, sometimes it's like herding cats, but you guys do it effortlessly, and it's been great. Also want to recognize senior Township staff Ernie McNeely, who is a rock star in the world of municipal government, Jody Kelly, who keeps us on an even keel. We have a running joke, I'm sort of the Ron Burgundy-
Also want to recognize Senior Township Staff Ernie McNeely, who is a rock star in the world of municipal government, Jody Kelly, who keeps us on an even keel. We have a running joke, I'm sort of the Ron Burgundy of the Board, so whatever, whatever script is in front of me, I will read it, so I always trust Jody just to not have anything that's bad, the way Ron Burgundy did. Lori Jennings does a great job with the HAC, and sort of keeps everybody aligned, and keeps things moving. So it's, it's really been great. When I, when I was running four years ago, my campaign slogan was a greener, safer, more walkable Bala Kinwood, and I, I think those are really values that all of us embrace in the Township, and, and we've made some progress, you know, fortunately, the East Levering Mill thing, we, that's been approved, we're gonna, the contract was awarded, so we're making progress on that. I think there's more to be done, but I think we're well situated to, to make progress. And just, again, to thank each and every one of my colleagues, it's really just been a pleasure to be around you. Thank you all.
Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. So I'm going to move that we approve the minutes of a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on November 15th, 2023, as distributed. Thank you, Vice President Gavron, for that second. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ins tensions? Okay, that carries on. Few announcements, the Board met an executive session on November 29th and earlier this evening regarding the following matters: billboard litigation, the ARP nonprofit vitality grant program, and a clubhouse road sewer easement. Monday, December 25th, 2023, Christmas Day, and Monday, January 1st, 2024, New Year's Day are legal holidays. The Township Administration Building and libraries will be closed for business, and there will be no refuse or recycling collection. The 63rd biennial reorganization meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM, in this room, the Board Room of the Township Administration Building. With that, we turn to the public privilege of the floor. This is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any non-agenda items, or any other public matters in which the Township has jurisdiction or authority. I'll remind you to please state your name and broadly in the Township where you live, prior to addressing the Board, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And we're going to start with those in the room. So, ready, please go ahead.
Thank you so much, President Sinai. My name is Aaron Gross, I am the President of the Neighborhood Club of Bala Kinwood. And I just wanted to step up here tonight to thank David McComb and Mike McKeon for all of the work that they've done on behalf of our neighborhood, echoing the comments that they are hardworking and prepared at all times. You know, Mike, I, was, Mike was there before David, when I first joined the Neighborhood Club, and he immediately became a really good friend of mine, and, and really reaches out to me to, to get our, to get the Neighborhood Club's opinion, but also to give his opinion and to help us out. He's very knowledgeable on all the issues, I, I assume he knows everybody in the Township, because if you've ever driven down Montgomery Avenue in the afternoon, you'll see him jogging, so he pretty much meets everybody. But Mike told me this afternoon that he, that his wife told him that he was, that she was very nervous that he wasn't going to have anything to do at night, so we do have an opening in the Neighborhood Club for Vice President and President. Yeah, where'd he go? David McComb has also been somebody, I know David, this wasn't mentioned, but David came on the Board in January of 2020, which, for everybody in this room knows, that means that two months later, the world, like, went out the window. So David really joined the Board at a time when nobody had any clue what was going on, and really stuck to it, and really still learned how, how the Township worked, and still made himself available and involved, and, you know, with the Bala Avenue issues, and with the gun control issues, with, with the development issues that were, we were drinking out of, out of a fire hose when you first came on the Board, and really having somebody there who could step in for our, the past Commissioners who were, you know, George and Ryan, who had done a great job, and really just stepped up to the plate. So thank you, David, and thank you, Mike, for all you've done.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alex Tavengar, President of the Villanova Neighborhood. Before you tonight, as a Board Member of a wonderful community organization, Neighbors Helping Neighbors on the Main Line, and have very briefly, would like to thank the Board for your support and trust of this organization over the last few years, and appreciate your allocation of additional funds for the organization's services to the Lower Marion community. And the organization collaborates with other local organizations, such as Meals on Wheels, and Fila Skating Club, and the collective work that these organizations perform continue to benefit the Lower Marion community. So I simply wanted to thank you and appreciate your trust and support.
Thank you.
My name is Trina Vox, I live in Bryn Mawr, and I'm President of the Harriton Association. And I just wanted to thank Tiffany for all of her support of the Harriton Park and the Harriton Association, and for the brilliant establishment of the, the Preserve Group to take care of the, the area along the road, around the stream, which has always been a difficult parcel to deal with for, for all of us. I also want to thank Scott, who stepped in because of Tiffany, Tiffany's living situation, it would have been a conflict of interest for her to take on the usual ex officio Board membership for Harriton, and Scott has been extremely helpful in, in taking over that position. Both of you, we're extremely grateful, and also for your support of our applications for funding. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege? Okay, see, none, Jody, do we have someone online?
I do, I have Ms. Adrian Seltzer, I'm going to promote her to a panel.
Okay.
Adrian Seltzer, Winwood, PA. First, I would like to give my thanks to Tiffany O'Neil, Dave McComb, and Mike McKeon for their service. Just thank you, I know that this is rather a thankless job, except from your other fellow Commissioners, but we, we do appreciate you. And I have a couple questions, but I'm not sure whether they should be now or later. If I want to talk about the, the, the public comment letters that are no longer being included, would that be part of the agenda?
Be now.
Okay, let's do that now.
Let's do that now, all right.
Yep.
All right, I do have a couple questions, I'll leave the questions to last, all right. First, you did no summaries of the letters going to the Board, even though they are distributed to the Board and to the relevant committees, and now you're not going to even include them as part of the formal record. I think it is important for the public to know what others think, and that other people are commenting, so they don't feel like they're alone. And I think, I just think this is really, really important, in fact, I think it's so important that as one of the co-founders of Stand Up for Lower Marion in Narberth, that we do a weekly newsletter that kind of summarizes what's going on in the Township. And if anybody would like their letter read, us as an organization gets five minutes, and I would be happy to summarize and read your comments into the record. You just have to email them to standupforlowermarion@gmail.com. A couple questions. How do you choose who is on what committee when you reorganize next year? And why is the Shade Tree Commission under Public Works and not Sustainability? All right. And while it is really nice that the Township has equipment for the hearing impaired at the meetings, it would be nice if Lower Marion TV followed the ADA and had closed captioning for people who work during this time and can't attend the meetings. So, that's it for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
There is no one else online, and if you give me a minute, I'll put Ms. Seltzer back as an attendee.
Okay. Okay, so now's the opportunity for members of this Board to respond to any of the comments. I'm going to start by taking a, a couple, I'm not going to respond to people thanking the Board, we are grateful. The, I just wanted to respond to a couple of Ms. Seltzer's comments, or, or questions. In terms of submitting written comments, actually, before we respond, I do have written comments.
Yes.
Okay, this is going to, it's going to preview the answer I'm about to give. So we did receive some written comments, which I will summarize. And just, just for the record, this is the last meeting in which we will be doing this, in 2024, we will not be doing this anymore. Michael Pollak from Ardmore wrote about various matters, and Jason Young from Haverford wrote regarding traffic on Montgomery Avenue. So as Ms. Seltzer, so now we're going to respond. So as Ms. Seltzer alluded to, we're not going to be reading those into the record anymore, I just wanted to explain why. And, and we debated this at length, in a large part because of what you, you know, the issues you raised, which is, you know, what we want to do is have, you know, maximal public participation. And so just to be clear, any communications that's sent to the Board is distributed to all the Board members, just like the ones I just read are. We all see them, we all have the opportunity to read them, and that process will continue, and still communicate directly with the Board. The part that is going to stop is whoever's Board President reading the, the summary of these comments. That started when we had COVID, when people could not attend in person. And what we have found is, is a couple of things. The first is that it becomes very, very difficult to summarize a three-page email into something that we could do in this meeting. And you run the risk that you are actually going the other way, you're doing an injustice to the comments, rather than providing the public, you know, record of the comments. It'd be much better for people actually just make those comments here in person, or on Zoom, 100% of their text read into the record, rather than just give, us giving a few lines that may or may not encapsulize what the, what the author had, had intended. So, so given that, we're going to just move away from adding the summaries in there, but everything else is going to stay the same. And we encourage people who have comments that they wish to make before the Board, to come here, stand at the podium, hear our responses to you, and, and participate in, in an act of public engagement. The second question is, who chooses who is on, you know, what committee? And the answer is that, that is the decision of Board Leadership. And so after Board Reorganization, when they have Board Leadership, they assign the committees. Any other response to public privilege? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to public comment. And this is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items, please keep comments to three minutes or less, and otherwise, everything else is the same as before. Please go ahead.
Thank you, still the same name, Aaron Gross, still living in the same place, I hope, in Bala Kinwood. I'm here tonight to speak about the agenda item for the Police Committee, the Authorization to Advertise Ordinance, Chapter 145, Vehicles and Traffic, Bryn Mawr Avenue Parking Restriction at Durbin Road and Montgomery Avenue. And I, I come here because I, I, I'm 100% for pedestrian safety, and in fact, it's the number one issue on the Neighborhood Club's agenda. And we have an entire committee designed to deal with it, and we bring it up at every single one of our meetings. But there is a process that includes the Traffic Safety Unit of the Township, and speaking to residents, that I think has, on more than one occasion, been skipped. And, you know, the stop signs on Bryn Mawr Avenue that are a little absurd, in the fact that there's two sets of stop signs right at one after the other, where in fact, if a bus stops at the second stop sign going south, and another bus was to stop at the, stop turning off of Latches, of Lodges Lane, it would probably be stuck there forever, because the bus actually reaches out back into the intersection behind it. And so you'd have to figure out, from one bus driver, would have to figure out that the other bus driver is not going to go until they go. So you, you, there's, there's a process, and I looked up the block where Penarth Avenue is, which is a regular T-intersection, which could have easily and simply been the correct intersection to do, but nobody in the Township was, none of the neighbors were consulted. And that's a process, a part of the process that I think is very unfortunate. I went out to these intersections that are on this agenda last night, and I measured the distances from the intersections to where these proposed, no parking prohibited at all times, or no parking here, Two Corner, NPHTC, as the Public Works Department spray paints on the ground, as I discovered. And what I discovered, first of all, is that one of these has been there since at least 2007, I don't know beyond that, because Google Street Maps, Street View only goes back to 2007, so one of these in its entirety is there already. And the other ones are a little short, one of them is 46 feet, and it's going to switch to 64 feet, the other one's 34, and it's going to switch to 55 feet. And I just question if, if anybody went out to these locations before these suggestions were made, whereas if, if some, one of these things is literally already there for the past 16 years, at the very least, clearly whoever suggested this did not check out the situation, because you literally can't extend it any further, because in fact, at that point, 64 feet is a driveway. So if you extended it another eight, 12, another 12 feet, you'd literally be extending it across a person's driveway. The second thing is, and I apologize for going a little over time, I did bump into a neighbor who was there last night at 10:20 PM, who said he's lived there for, his name is Jonas Zaslow, and he lived there for 14 years, on Bryn Mawr Avenue, right off of Montgomery Avenue. So I decided to ask him, because I figured, who, who else would know better? And he said to me that in fact, Bryn Mawr Avenue from, between Bala Avenue and Montgomery Avenue is actually thinner at the other end of, of Bryn Mawr Avenue, closer to Bala Avenue, not by Montgomery Avenue. He said that there's been no problem making a right onto Montgomery Avenue, which is the side of the street that's having the most significant changes made. On the other side, coming onto Montgomery Avenue, that's where it's already been illegal for at least 16 years. And, you know, he said that, yes, the road gets a little thin, but people do park a little onto the verge, which is what I call a swale, but like, I've discovered that's something only in South Florida.
Mr. Gross, I'm going to have to ask you to...
Yes, and I'm going to, I'm going to finish up. I, I, I do want to ensure that I bring to this Committee's, to, to this Commission's attention that neighbors and residents, as well civic organizations, should be included in the process. When the stop signs were put in, it was done over the summer, and it was done at a time when the civic associations, as well as many members of the public, are out of town. And this fortunately didn't happen this time, this happened in the middle of the winter when everybody's here. And we're going to keep noticing, and we're going to make sure that we have our voice heard on these issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to make public comment? Okay, anyone online?
Ms. Seltzer, I'm going to promote her to the panels.
Okay.
Hi, I wanted to say that some of the comments that Commissioner, Chair, what are you, President? Anyway, Todd Sinai made, I had already made, and you left out the fact that there's a reasonable amount of people who cannot attend meetings because they are working.
This is, this is, this is public comment on...
Well, you left out that, and I wanted to put that in the record, that there's people who...
So I appreciate that, and I'm happy to communicate with you offline, but the, you know, the, the, the protocol, the rules of this Board is that we do not have a back-and-forth debate in this meeting, and that's why it's one turn each. Thank you. Thank you. Is anyone else wish to take advantage of public comment?
No, there's no one else.
Okay, thank you. We did have three items that were submitted. Ethan Frank from Marion wrote regarding parking. Bruce Ludwig from Bryn Mawr wrote in support of additional funding for street tree planting. And Michael Pollak of Ardmore wrote in opposition to the award of contract for Shoffel Plaza and in support of numerous other agenda items. Does any commissioner wish to respond to public comment? Commissioner Kramer?
I'd like to respond to some of the comments of Aaron Gross. I don't know whether you were here when there were, was a great deal of public comment by neighbors on the subject of the stop signs at Lodges and Bryn Mawr. These stop signs were requested by multiple neighbors. Before they were put in, there, I had requested a traffic study. And there were about 90 cars per day who were going between 35 and 55 miles an hour on that stretch of Bryn Mawr between Balla Avenue and the Kinwood School at Levering Mill Road. And there with no brake, nothing to break it up, nothing to slow down the traffic. I had reports from many people, including people who lived at Bryn Mawr and Lodges, of near accidents as they tried to make turns onto Bryn Mawr, off of, off of the part of Lodges on the east side of the road. And there was a blind resident who came and spoke in favor of these, who lives at Kent, which is half a block from Lodges, a half a block, you know, a half a block in on Lodges from Bryn Mawr, for whom it was unsafe to be able to cross Bryn Mawr Avenue. And so these were all of the factors that went into the decision to place stop signs at that location. Where they were placed and how they were put, and the fact that there were two of them, was the choice of our Traffic Safety Department. And they are the ones who chose the locations. And to be honest, I hear about these stop signs all the time. And most of the residents are very grateful for them and are very happy to have them there. Every now and then, there's a resident who complains, like my husband, that we don't need to have stop signs there. But I would say the vast majority of people that I hear from, and I walk that neighborhood all the time because I live, I live right near it, people are very happy to have them there. As far as the, the other decisions that have been made, that Traffic Safety assessed the no parking zones upon the request of a resident who lives at the corner of Montgomery and Bryn Mawr, who complained about near accidents at that location. And I asked the township to investigate it. They investigated it, and they made the recommendations for what, where the no parking signs would be. So we left this to the township experts to figure this out.
Mr. Gross, Mr. Gross, I am going to talk louder than you. Sit down. Mr. Gross, sit, Mr. Gross, sit down. We are going to have you removed from this room if you do not sit down. You know the rules. Aaron, you've been around here long enough, you know the rules. Nope. Hey, hey. We'll talk about it later, not now, not at this point in the meeting. Ladies and, hey, okay. Okay, we're going to take a recess. We're going to ask you to step outside. Those people who are remaining here, let's make it to 2024 in good spirits and good Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to, Commissioner Kramer, were you done?
I was just wrapping up.
Okay.
Saying that these, these locations, everything was recommended by Traffic Safety, when they, they were the ones who chose the locations for the distances and for where the stop signs would be placed.
Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to respond? Go ahead, Commissioner McCann.
Thank you. Commissioner Kramer, I'm sorry you had to sit through that situation over there for the last couple of minutes. I was going to talk a little bit more about traffic safety because this is my last day on the board, and I kind of had some thoughts of thinking about projecting forward, but given how animated this scene has just gotten, I'll be, I'll be very brief. But all I wanted to point out is, when I got on this board in 2018, I looked at traffic safety sort of in one lens, and it evolved about halfway through or so. And I have residents who I've talked to who, you know, they complain, they want things in certain places, and I've got critics in Belmont Hills, Balla Kinwood, and Penn Valley who were upset that we were unable to put traffic safety features in some locations. And they fit in some places, and they don't fit in others. And as Commissioner Kramer mentioned, we defer to staff, we defer to the police, we take the recommendations from the experts, and put it all together and try to do the right thing with it. But we can't put traffic safety features in all locations. I think it's important, we're the gatekeepers, it's okay to say no if something doesn't make sense. And if it makes sense, then we go forward with it. And again, Commissioner Kramer, I can't remember, in my six years, actually seen an outburst like that here, so I'm sorry if you had to sit through that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner McCann. Any other commissioners wish to respond to public comment? Commissioner Burnham?
Yeah, thank you very much, President Sinai, and I'm going to repeat that. Thank you very much, President Sinai. That was a very difficult situation, which was handled extremely well on your part, and I believe appreciated by all of us and all of those who are listening. That is so untypical of what takes place in this boardroom in Lower Marion. And on the fly, you handled it appropriately, and we all appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Burnham. Any other commissioners wish to respond to public comment? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on, and we are on to the consent calendar. And I think we have certainly at least one item to be removed from consent, and is that...
P.
Sorry, which one?
P.
Yeah, P is in Paul. So does anyone else wish to remove something from consent? Okay, so we're going to move for the, I'm going to move for the approval of the consent calendar with the exception of item P, which is the proposed 2024 budget amendment increase of township contributions to outside organizations. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner McCombe. Sorry. I think we go to a roll call vote in this, right? Yes, sorry, I'm still catching up here. Okay. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
For the adoption of the consent calendar, Mr. Burnham?
Well, consent calendar with one item removed, correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
As a...
Aye.
Mr. Churchill?
Yes.
Mr. Corden?
Yes.
Mr. Gatt?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. McCombe?
Yes.
Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zell?
Aye.
Mr. Simon?
Aye.
Consent calendar is duly adopted.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. So we're now going to go to item P, which is on page 23 of your packet. Give me a moment to get there, which is a proposed 2024 budget amendment increase of township contributions to outside organizations. I am going to make the motion, but Madam Secretary, because I did not prepare to make, like, do I have to read every single line of this? Is that the way I need to do this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's why I'm checking.
Can I just point you order? So when you pull something off of consent, then we should really go in the order of the agenda. So you can do those building and planning things, then when we get to the finance portion of the agenda, then you would...
Okay.
...address the thing that came off of consent and the other item.
Got it. I was just going in page order, and this was next in the page order, but I will do it later. Okay. So duly chastised, we're going to go to each 29, the Building and Plan Committee, which is Ardmore House Agreement. And so I'm going to make this as a motion. I move that we approve authorizing execution of an agreement with Human Good East, not on its own account, but solely as agent for yet-to-be-formed special purpose entity to lease from township real property located 55 Ardmore Avenue, Ardmore, in service project manager for the construction of a 48-unit detached senior affordable housing expansion to the Ardmore House. Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Grimes, for the second. I don't think we have a presentation on this. Is there sort of any commissioner questions or comment? Okay, seeing none. I guess all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Absentions? That carries unanimously. The second is the, next is the Ardmore House Commitment Letter on page 45, and I will make a motion and move that we approve issuing a letter of support and financial commitment of up to $7.5 million for the construction of a low-income multifamily senior housing development consisting of a 48-unit detached expansion to the existing 63-unit Ardmore House facility. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Any commissioner questions or comments? Commissioners off.
Thank you, President Sinai. I support the project for the expansion of Ardmore House, and in fact, have been intimately involved in the process. I support use of the Cali ARP grant that's coming our way of $3 million, and use of the $1.4 million or so that's in our affordable housing fund, and even reallocating a specified $1 million from the township's ARP funds. However, I don't support using or promising any additional township funds for this project, and therefore do not support this item or this letter.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners off. Any other commissioners wish to comment? I will, if no one else wants to. So I appreciate the comments, certainly from my own perspective, even if it costs a township $7.5 million, this would still be among the least expensive affordable housing that one could actually build in this township, if you just net against township dollars. And we don't have very many opportunities to do this, and so we should take advantage of the opportunity. And with good fortune, it won't take $7.5 million of township dollars because, you know, hopefully we will, we will obtain other sources of funding, but this does not move ahead if we don't backstop it, and I think it's important that we do it. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Absentions? Madam Secretary, that carries 11 to 2. So the next item on our agenda is the Ardmore House Budget Amendment on page 53. And I will move that we approve to amend the proposed 2024 budget for CIP project 4097 Affordable Housing to reduce the allocation for engineering by $600,000 to $100,000, and to allocate an additional $3.7 million for construction to be funded by the township in the 2026 CIP in order to fully fund the total cost of $7.5 million for the Ardmore House expansion project over 2024 to 2026. Vice President Gavron, thank you for the second. Any commissioner comments or questions? Commissioners off.
President Sinai, for the same reasons I spoke of a moment ago, I don't support this amendment.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners off. Anyone else wish to make comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Absentions? Madam Secretary, that also carries 11 to 2. So now, am I allowed to go to page 23? Thank you.
Ask.
Okay. So this was the item that was pulled off consent. I am going to make this as a motion. So I move that we approve amending the proposed 2024 budget to increase a 2024 general fund non-departmental budget by $30,500, and to allocate the funds to certain nonprofit organizations indicated below with the allocation Ardmore Initiative, conditional on the development of an action plan by AI to fulfill the expectations outlined in Exhibit B, the AI reauthorization plan, to the satisfaction of township staff. And those funds are outside organizations, ElderNet of Lower Marion and Narberth, $24,000, Center for Positive Aging in Lower Marion, $20,000, Lower Marion Conservancy, $20,000, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, $15,000, New Horizons, Senior Citizen Center, $14,000, Ardmore Initiative, $10,000, Balla Avenue of the Arts, $10,000, Next Level Sports, $8,000, Riverbend Environmental Education Center, $5,000, Mainline Meals on Wheels, $5,000, Montgomery County Emergency Service, $1,500, Victim Services Center, $1,500, Visiting Nurse Association, $1,500, and Lower Marion Community Watch, $1,000, and that totals $136,500. Do I have a second? Commissioner McCombe, thank you. Any commissioner comments? Commissioner Burnham?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, and then I'm going to explain why that is the amendment. The amendment would be to eliminate the words at the end of the, before you get to the actual distribution, which says, "With the allocation to Ardmore Initiative, conditional on the development of an action plan by AI to fulfill the expectations outlined in Exhibit B of the AI reauthorization plan to the satisfaction of the township staff." First, let me say that I have both emailed and talked with both of the Ardmore Commissioners, Commissioner S. Kramer, who's not here this evening, and Commissioner Stevenson, and I've also been in touch with the Ardmore Initiative. There are really two fundamental reasons for which I seek to make this amendment and remove that condition. One is a matter of just policy or practice or process, and the other drills down to the specifics here. As a matter of process, I am concerned with the township putting itself into a position wherein for an independent organization such as AI, it is now going to find itself in a day-to-day, almost, advisory role to oversee what is taking place or to supervise certain activities, and that the township as a matter of process really shouldn't be doing that with any independent organization. When we first started this process of funding outside organizations, we were subject to criticism on a couple of levels. One was the question, are we outside of our lane? And by that, is this something that the municipal code even allows us to go ahead and do? And secondly, if we're going to use taxpayer monies to go ahead and give it to independent organizations, should we even be doing that anyway? Is that not a decision of taxpayers? And in going forward, what we had decided years ago, or I think that at one point, the threshold was $50,000, was that this was going to established organizations, that we're able to go ahead and do something which somewhat supplements what we can do with the township and serving the residents as a whole. And there were certain criteria that were necessary in order to get on this list, which included setting forth the financial health of the organization, the history of the organization, and that it would then have the capability of fulfilling that. And this is expanded, now we're up to $136,500, and I have no problem with that or the specific allocations. But what I do have a problem with is that if we're going to go and, in essence, require somebody to do something to our satisfaction, we are now involved in the operations of one of these entities, and that I do not believe what is the role of the township in any one of these particular organizations. When you then drill down to what the specifics are of Exhibit B, it notes that the Ardmore Initiative remains an independent organization with a scope of work that extends beyond implementation of the Ardmore Master Plan, which many of the line items within Exhibit B seem to address. Independence is a key thing. It then itemizes the five areas for which the township is supposed to give, to review to see if it is met to its satisfaction. And the first discusses streetscapes, which are something which we all strive for using this language, consistent inviting and visually appealing streetscape. And that it states that considering the upkeep of the streetscape falls under the responsibility of property owners, and it does, Ardmore Initiative will collaborate with property owners to ensure the proper maintenance as well as the consistent and appealing implementation of greening within commercial districts. So what that means is Ardmore Initiative has got to go to property owners, but they can't compel the property owners to do anything. And Ardmore Initiative is already out there doing that. This is something that they've been doing long before this request for the $10,000 that we're rewarding them came forth. But how are we going then to monitor if they are doing that to our satisfaction? Give us the number of property owners you met, tell us what they said and how you responded. And that is that the Ardmore Initiative is supposed to host events to showcase Ardmore as a destination and to assume a leadership role in programming these civic spaces within the district. They already host a number of programs. Many of us get those invitations all the time. Some of us attend, some of us are unable to do so. But this goes on. Again, how are we to monitor this? How many are they supposed to have? Five, ten, one a month? And are we then going to decide, well, this one wasn't done to our satisfaction, you weren't promoting Ardmore as a destination? It is very unclear what it is that we are supposed to be doing in connection with that. The third one deals with, with parking. It notes that the Ardmore Master Plan has recommended the establishment of a parking committee to address the shifting demands of businesses and its customers. And that Ardmore Initiative is take lead in, in these parking needs. Again, they may be able to meet with businesses, but they can't dictate what those businesses are going to be able to command or demand upon their own employees. And each of those businesses are going to be different. When there was the work being done on, on cricket, as you may recall, many of those businesses came forth to us and saying, well, we were trying to shuttle parking elsewhere, they were concerned that they were going to be shut down. Or if they have to tell employees to go elsewhere so that their customers could park, they thought it was an imposition on their customers. Ardmore Initiative is not going to be able to change what any one individual business may do. They can promote that because it's good for Ardmore as the master plan indicates, but how are we going to determine if they've done it to the satisfaction? Item number four is that the Ardmore Initiative are to set forth its primary objectives being enhancements of business recruitment strategies through strategic planning aligned with the master plan's recommendations. The initiative should actively engage in community outreach efforts to attract local tenants that offer goods and services that align with the preferences of the surrounding residential community. We can't dictate to a business what goods and services they, they provide. Businesses are going to make that determination on, well, what do we think the immediate patrons are going to want? Ardmore Initiative can be involved and say, look, we understand they would like a new, a new restaurant or some other type of facility. The retail world is having its difficulty as much as it is, but Ardmore Initiative, which is sponsored by the local businesses, is going to want to promote that, that business activity. That's what their existence is all about. And the fifth item was to meet with the Commissioners of Ardmore on an annual basis. In my tenure here, the Ardmore Initiative has been willing to meet with any one of us at any point in time at a drop of hat, and I don't think that that's going to be problematic. Thus, I don't know how it is we think that as a township, that if we were to do this, which is a process, I submit is, is a mistake, but if we're going to do this, how we're going to determine that they've met any satisfaction? And then what are we going to do? Say, you know what, it's not satisfactory, you know that ten grand we gave you? Give us half back. I mean, what are we doing with this? So I respectfully understand what's trying to be accomplished here. And I assure you, so does the Ardmore Initiative. They recognizes that this isn't double secret probation because there's no secret about it as to what it is that we want them to do. And if they don't accomplish these goals, don't come back to us next year asking for money because you would not have fulfilled what we were looking for you to do. So with that, that is the reason I've removed this from consent. And I ask, and as I said, I've talked with Commissioner S Kramer as well as Commissioner Stevenson about rethinking this, remove that contingency from this, and then, then let's move forward.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Bernheim. Is there a second? Okay, thank you Commissioner Grimes. Commissioner Stevenson?
I would like to thank Commissioner Bernheim for his eloquent.
Presentation.
Presentation, I'll use that word. And, and I understand his position. However, I, I, it gives me pause because you, you spent a lot of time talking about giving these organizations independence, but we spent an equal amount of time in this, as this, in this body, talking about there needed to be oversight when we had presented grants to other organizations. And, and, and A I is not exclusively independent because if it was, then they shouldn't be asking for money. They are asking for money because they want to do a partnership. And we're willing to do a partnership. And I, I would also like to add that we've spent a lot of time, I say we, myself, the Commissioners, and also representatives of the township, particularly Mr. Ford, with the members of the leadership of the A I. So this is not something that staff or anyone just came out, pulled a rabbit out of a hole and said, let's, let's, let's pick on A I. This has been a generated conversations in a way to do it and, and we attempted to do it in a way that it would be productive and it would have positive end results of those same things that you said. And I respect, I respect each one of those things you said because I think all those things that you said, the end of the day, we want is true. However, I, I, I would say to you, and I'm not going to put Mr. Ford on the, on the, on the, on the hot seat, but I would say if he would, has anything he would like to add about that, I think it would be helpful to understand that this was something that a series of meetings that we've had over time to talk about that. And to talk about the latest thing, even after we voted the last time, to have conversations about to come to this. And again, I want to be very clear. I truly respect everything Mr. Bernheim said. But I wanted to explain to this, this was not a reactionary kind of thing that we were doing. So if you could share.
Absolutely Commissioners and, uh, good evening Board. So I, I think to truly understand the, I guess, the topic, we'd have to talk about that Exhibit B for the reauthorization, right? And Exhibit B was the, the first time that it was added to a reauthorization of the Ardmore Initiative. And Exhibit B grew out of concerns of, from the Ardmore Commissioners that, from businesses and residents of the community, and Ardmore had expressed regarding, you know, doubts regarding some of the services and perceptions for A I. And to your point, Dan, you know, A I is a tremendous organization that does very good work. So A, the Exhibit B that was attached to the, to the reauthorization was the, I guess, the effort by the township staff and, and the Commissioners to clarify expectations so that when those who do have issues with A I come to the township to, you know, voice their opinions, let's say. We could point to Exhibit B saying, this is all the tremendous work that A I does. Since that exhibit was included in the reauthorization and the reauthorization was passed with the, with the ordinance as required, you know, follow-up conversations with, with A I kind of pointed to something that you said, Commissioner Bernheim, what does that look like? You know, what does it look like to communicate? What does it look like to engage the community? So in, in several conversations with A I's exec board, their leadership, we thought about clarifying what it means to fulfill that exhibit since it's part of the reauthorization of A I. And the condition that was added by Commissioner S Kramer as part of the budget was a guarantee that were to facilitate a conversation for the development of a work plan. And that work plan would identify specific mutually agreed upon actions that A I could do in partnership and with the support of township to fulfill that exhibit. We saw that it was a natural next step to clarify, you know, how does A I fulfill that exhibit? And as Commissioner Stevenson said, we met with the A I exec board last week following the, the addition of the condition to basically explain that. You know, that it wasn't a punitive measure, that it wasn't the township having a lack of faith in, in A I, but it was to facilitate a conversation for the development of a work plan that A I would develop themselves. So this wouldn't be something that the township would craft and, you know, impose on the organization, but this was something that A I would be able to say, this is what we can do and identify areas that they would need additional support in. And then work with the township to provide that support and really help A I be the best that it can be. And the executive leadership at A I was open to that. They welcomed the, the more involved and more robust collaboration with the township, especially as we have several large-scale projects such as the, the Shoffel Plaza coming online, in which case, you know, we will be partnering with A I through that entire process. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any other questions regarding that.
And before you answer your questions, I, I gotta say this. It gives me pause that we had this meeting and we, we came out in agreement about moving forward in a positive way. So if somebody reached out to you and told you about all these boogeyman things that were happening, then shame on them because that was not how we did it. We had that meeting for the purpose after our last board meeting in a way to make sure that that bridge was a piece of it. And for someone to say otherwise, if, if that was a part of, who was a part of that conversation, then shame on them.
I need to clarify that. So there's no misinterpretation there. Nobody reached out to me. I, I was unable to attend the committee meeting unfortunately last time, and I tuned in through Zoom right as the, the Chair of A I Nancy Scuaro was speaking. I caught the tail end of what she had stated about this. And then I, I am the one that followed up with them and then, because I did not have Exhibit B available to me, and then finally was able to get it through her. And the reaction I noted from her comments that night, I'm unaware of any subsequent conversations, but my interpretation, my impression is what is being set forth here. And then as I stated, there are two levels of this. One is just the process itself as to what we're doing, that we, this sets forth what we're looking for.
I will.
This sets forth what it is and that that's where we were headed. But nobody came out to me and said, oh, my gosh, you know, notwithstanding some meeting you had, we feel to the contrary.
Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Bernheim? Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Courtney?
Thank you President Sinai. Commissioner Bernheim, there are three Ardmore Commissioners. And I will assume that when you had conversations with Commissioner Stevens and, and Commissioner Kramer, that they talked to you about the months of work and meetings that went into the reauthorization of A I, that went into the creation of Exhibit B and the discussions we had with staff. And I will give the lion's share of the credit to Commissioner Stevenson and to Commissioner Kramer. And it is my hope that the comments by our Assistant Township Manager, put, put aside some of your concerns about our staff's ability to judge whether A I meets the standards of Exhibit B. And when I listen to your comments, it sounds to me like your problem is not necessarily with how is staff going to assess this, but with Exhibit B itself. And the problem with arguing against Exhibit B is that that vote has already happened and it's already been included as part of the reauthorization. And I want to make it clear that what, what you are attempting to amend is not to get rid of Exhibit B, but to remove, remove a condition that the Ardmore Initiative live up to something that we've already asked them to live up to. This shouldn't be a problem for them. And by making an implicit condition explicit, I think we've only sent a message about the importance to the Ardmore Commissioners. And I hope to the rest of this board about what Ardmore Initiative's role in Ardmore and in the business community should be. Thank you.
Hey, thank you Commissioner Courtney. Commissioner Grimes?
So, thank you President Sinai. So Brandon, if I could ask you, because you're up there, is this allocation as proposed here acceptable to the Ardmore Initiative?
So the, the ten thousand and, you know, we would have to ask the Ardmore Initiative representative, but this is the allocation that they've gone, that they've asked for, that they've received multiple years in the past. So there is no change to the overall allocation. The only change to this specific item is adding the, the condition that the money that they would otherwise get be conditioned on the development of that work plan by A I.
Okay, so, so thanks. Let me just say something, hopefully quickly. If Exhibit B is exactly what's in their authorization, it's certainly reasonable to expect the Ardmore Initiative to be complying with that. And although I do think Commissioner Bernheim makes a good point in that, in that I'm not certain that we should be in general putting conditions on, on grants of money, particularly when they're already in their, in their plan and budget, which they're already required to follow. The Ardmore Initiative is a municipal authority, which is a governmental agency. It has a board of directors. The plan in five, and I assume five-year budget, was approved by this board of Commissioners and the rate payers, the assessment, who pay the assessments, had an opportunity to object in certain numbers to prevent it from going in, and they failed to do that. So in my mind, they have authorization to run their organization according to that plan and budget, which apparently includes Exhibit B. So the point of this is that, I'm sorry, I respect that reiterating compliance with Exhibit B is necessary to, on this authorization. I would hope that in general though, with the Ardmore Initiative and also with the City Avenue District, which is our other special services district, that, that this board doesn't in the future feel the need to condition money on a, on a, what is effectively another governmental body, because I think that's not a great precedent. But having said that, I respect all the work of the three Ardmore Commissioners and will not object to this appropriation as it's done here. So thank you.
Hey, thank you Commissioner Grimes. Anyone else wish to comment or question?
Can I respond to the question that Commissioner Courtney asked me?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll agree. Commissioner Courtney, two, two things I may, one, one is that there was no, nothing that I stated, and if you inferred that, then maybe I wasn't as articulate as people were commenting, that was suggesting that it was a challenge to Exhibit B. The concern I have is in the process of doing something, quote, to the satisfaction of the township. This is already part of what they're going to do, so we're giving them the money and saying, all right, go ahead and do it. And if you should fail, like any of these other organizations, the problem would be the next time they came around that we would have a lack of confidence of them fulfilling things. So that, that's the process aspect of it. As for the Ardmore Commissioners, I wasn't cutting you out of anything, and I'm sure from experience of a number of other items you can think about, that's never anything I've done in, in your regard and the things that are underneath the umbrella of your, your award, but I was leapfrogging off of the committee meeting, and it was Commissioner Stevenson and Commissioner S Kramer that seemed to be the proponents of this. So no one was looking to cut you out of anything. And the last comment was, it was referenced during that committee meeting that the Ardmore, Ardmore Initiative found out only on that evening that Exhibit B was being dovetailed with the, excuse me, with the, with the grant. Thus, from my perspective, the understanding that this was something new to them, not that it was new to their, I'm searching for the words, you know, their, their own plan, but it was new to them as a contingency from this. So there would be no way that I could connect dots, that this is something that had been discussed at any point, you know, prior to that. But again, more is, albeit Commissioner Grimes isn't going to support the amendment, it is the process of that that I think is something that we really, it's not a road that we want to go down.
Thank you Commissioner Bernheim. So, okay, Commissioner off.
Last time we talked about it, the staff did agree to the oversight role. It is unusual to put a condition, but, you know, alternatives to not fund. And so I thought putting a condition seemed reasonable given the time involved that has been reported by the Ardmore Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Commissioner off. I'm going to give one last chance. Okay, I think we're ready to take a vote. So we are voting on the amendment because Commissioner Bernheim made an amendment that was seconded. And so that amendment was to strike the, the conditions on the Ardmore Initiative allocation. So all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. I see three. All those opposed? One, two, three. Do you get that count? Three, four, five, six, nine? Nine? Okay, absentions? Are we? Oh, it was ten? Okay, okay, I can't count. Okay, so, what happens when the business school professor, like, can't get, like, whatever. Okay, so the, the, so the amendment fails. So with that, we have the original motion. So all those in favor of the motion that was originally presented, please raise your hand. So we are on to page 54 of your packet, which is the adoption of the 2023 deficiency ordinance. So I will move that we amend ordinance, that we pass an ordinance to amend ordinance number 4256, adopted December 14, 2022, making a change in certain appropriations, some of which have proven to be larger than needed and some to be insufficient, in authorizing the proper township officers to make the required transfers from and to appropriations heretofore made of receipts not heretofore estimated. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held November 15, 2023, and duly advertised in the November 23, 2023 edition of the Mainline Times in suburban. I'll do have a second. Thank you, Vice President Gavin. Any questions for staff or any comments from my colleagues on the board? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, this needs a real call vote.
For the adoption of ordinance 4283, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McCone.
Yes.
Mr. McCain.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Aye.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now on to the adoption of the ordinance for the 2024 budget tax levy and appropriations on page 56 of your packet. And I will move that we pass an ordinance imposing a levy for general revenue purposes on all taxable real estate in the township in the amount of 4.19 mils on each $1 of assessed valuation, adopting an annual budget and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the purposes of municipal government for the 2024 fiscal year and approving the 2024 through 2029 capital improvement program. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held November 15, 2023, and duly advertised in November 23, 2023, edition of the Mainline Times in suburban.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Zelloff for the second, and I apologize for not giving you the second on the previous one. Okay.
This is the better one.
Okay. Glad, glad someone's happy today.
You can talk about being happy if you want.
Okay. So just before, I have, I have a comment, but before then, does anyone have any motions that they're going to make? Okay. So, so I'm going to open up the board for comment, but I'm going to have the privilege of going first, which is, this is yet another year where we are proposing a no, no millage increase, no, no tax rate increase in this township, which is a remarkable achievement and not really something that certainly we can take the bulk of the credit for, but it's due to the hard work of our township staff and of prior boards and their leadership who really put us on the sound financial footing that we find ourselves in today, and in no small measure due to a fair amount of good fiscal fortune that has come our way. So just a couple of comments on that, on that situation we find ourselves in. First, one thing that I've been, I've been delighted to see on the board that we have been operating on is that we really have been focused on what we want to accomplish. We haven't really had a discussion over, okay, what we want to accomplish and can we squeeze it into the budget this year, right? We have the luxury of starting with what we want to do and then deriving from that, like, how much money we're going to need. And that is, that is, that is terrific, that fits in with what I had hoped we would be able to accomplish on this board, focus on what we want to do, on what we want to accomplish. The second is, even though we've had no millage rate increase, we have had significant revenue growth in a commensurate growth in spending. And I don't want anyone listening to this to think that the township has not been spending, you know, more and more each year or collecting more and more each year. The only thing is we have not had that revenue growth from our residential, well, from our property tax base, right? Our property tax base over the last, God knows how many years, has gone up maybe a half a percent, right? You, where has it come from? It's come from our business tax. And to just give you a sense of the scale of this, for every $2 in property tax we collect, we collect one in business taxes. Okay? It is a very large portion of our tax base, such a large portion that when I moved to the Philadelphia metropolitan area more than 25 years ago, one of my senior colleagues said, yeah, if you go into Lower Merion, your taxes are going to be lower because they actually have a commercial tax base, and the all-residential townships don't have it. And, and indeed, that is exactly what the case. But the other thing is that has grown over the last decade, and it's grown as a share of our revenue for a couple of reasons. One is businesses are making more money because people are making more money. That's a thing that's been happening over the last couple of years, so that base has gone up. And then the second is, of course, the county has not reassessed our residential property, and so the residential property tax base has not gone up. So how much has it gone up? It's gone up about $9 million over the last decade. Transfer tax, which also has gone up because as property values go up, the percent that you get off the transfer tax goes up in parallel. So those two things have gone up so much that in order to match them, had we increased our residential property tax to try and match them, we would have increased our residential property tax by 30%. We did not raise residential property taxes by 30% because that amount of money came from the business tax instead. And that is the virtue of having that tax. So we have the fortune of not having to raise the property taxes here. And, you know, two years ago, I voted to raise the property tax and lost. The, and have, since then, have kind of revised. I thought what was happening was we were having these windfalls of transfer tax and business tax revenue, and I no longer think they're windfalls. I think, I think this is just how it is. And so we need to recalibrate and rethink about it, and so, which is, which is why what has happened is that we've had a increasing general fund. And when the time comes that, that, you know, the business tax, which is a volatile tax, does not deliver, and we have a decrease in our general fund, then we are going to have to turn to our residential tax base and raise our property taxes, in my view, at that point. Fortunately, from my perspective, we are not at that point this year. But that is, that is the fiscal status of, from my perspective, of this township. Okay. Thanks for letting me end this year on a wonky note. Anyone else have any comments? Commissioner Zelloff.
President Sinai, I would simply like to thank Ernie's leadership and that of Eric and Chris and the others, other directors of departments and managers in the township who've been working since the summer to put together this budget. They start from the ground up every year, and they have put, gave us a budget that was responsive to our workshop in June for capital, our workshop in September for our operating budget. We have a cycle that works. We have been well-prepared as a board, and we've made amendments that have been thoughtful and done in advance, and we have considered a lot of, as President Sinai described, opportunities for change and increase without having to then have offsetting expense decreases, which sometimes happens, but in this, in this year did not have to happen. And so we are fortunate with strong management, and we are, that puts us in the position that President Sinai described, and it is an exciting moment to be able to pass this budget as presented and amended.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. All very well put. Anyone else wish to make a comment? Questions? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, real call vote.
For the adoption of ordinance 4284, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
I abstain to the extent that it includes the budget increase funds for the tax collector, but otherwise vote in favor.
Mr. McCone.
Yes.
Mr. McCain.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any unfinished business to come before this board? Any new business to come before this board? Ladies and gentlemen, we are hereby adjourned until 2024.